Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, November 16th, 2017 edition of the Auburn zoning Board of Appeals. Before I get started, do I have anyone recording the meeting this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. If you could do me a favor and put your cellphones on either vibrate or silent, please, during the course of the meeting, I would appreciate it. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the hearing. Me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, 7:00 PM applicant Longwood Development Corp. has received a request for continuance today at 3:20 from the attorney. Do I have a motion to accept the request for continuation?
I make the motion as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we can put that away. Our next applicant, 7:10 PM, Penrose Properties LLC requesting 40B comprehensive permits for property known as Mary D. Stone School located at 11 Church Street, map 49, parcel 116, and property located known as Julia Bancroft School located at 3 Vinyl Street, map 10 Locks 68, and this is continuation from 11/217, is the applicant present. Sir, if you could approach the lectern, please, and bring us up to date on your projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Auburn staff, thank you. Charlie Adams, Penrose Properties, thank you again for continuing the hearing and allowing us to come back to you tonight. In the, since the last time we have met with you, we've had the opportunity, as you recall at the last meeting, we just got the peer review comments like that day. We were actually able to address many of them sort of informally with the group, and a lot of them sort of fall into the range of sort of Scribner's things, if you would, that will get cleaned up, you know, ultimately with the final drawings that the staff will review and sign off for with the building permit. There were a few things that we wanted to clean up before then for you, but for tonight, so we're gonna do that, and in a minute I'm gonna turn it over to Chelsea to walk you through the comments that we made to the peer review. I believe you have copies of her responses to those, and some of the changes that we made, I think they're fairly minor, but we can go through those with you. And then after that, the other thing we worked on between last meeting and this meeting was putting together a draft resolution with your attorney and our attorney, and that's gone back and forth, and I believe your attorney has reviewed that and has gotten something today, and so we'll be prepared to talk about that draft decision, if you will, and I can work through that today as well. So those are the two things that are on our list to talk about. So unless the board has any questions or comments now, I would just simply turn it over to Chelsea Christensen, who can, our civil engineer, can walk you through the peer review.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Chelsea Christensen from Niche Engineering, civil engineer. We received some peer review comments from Graves Engineering on November 2nd, and we prepared a response letter to a lot of these items. A lot of this is related to the fact that these are schematic design plans and not fully developed, but we did want to address their comments and acknowledge that we will be addressing their concerns in the future documents. So I will go through the items one by one briefly, just to note what they said and acknowledge it, starting with the Julia Bancroft School. First comment was, included summary of the impervious area. That wasn't the narrative, we may need to elaborate on it. I believe that another comment actually addresses that further, that they want it broken down a little further for building area on, in a table, which we will address in our formal submission. The second comment includes adding the setback lines. These were actually on the preliminary plan, but were taken off for the schematic design set, but we sent the schematic design to the reviewer because they were farther along, so they've now been put back on the plans for your records. The third comment is, included budding property lot numbers and property owner names, these were also put back on the plans. Fourth comment, in the zoning summary table, there was a discrepancy in building maximum height, which has been revised on the new plans. The fifth comment is a note about Auburn Wetlands Protection Regulations, there are no wetlands within 200 feet of the site. The sixth comment acknowledges that we are on the right track with our stormwater management plan, we will comply with Mass DEP Stormwater Standards as a redevelopment. Seventh comment is notes that we're in a Zone 2 of the public water supply, and we are, will absolutely be complying with the requirements of storage of materials in the Zone 2 watershed. The eighth comment is again about Mass DEP Stormwater Standards, which we are committed to complying with. Ninth comment is, our water quality structure detail needs more specific sizing, which will happen as the plans get further developed. The 10th comment is about the Oxford Street North driveway, needs to be shifted, we'll have to look at this in more detail to see the most appropriate configuration for that driveway, but that will be in the further plans. 11th comment was again about preliminary plans, that they're not quite developed yet, but they'll look forward to reviewing them in more detail later on. The next comment was, again, this is the one I was referring to earlier, where they want a more detailed breakdown of impervious areas and site areas, which we do have available, they just haven't been put into a formal submission, but we'll make sure it gets in there for the final plans. Comment 13 is about considering adding a fence to the patio area, we haven't really gotten into that level of detail of the patio, but we will certainly explore it as we move Comment 14 is about water and sewer, GEI did not review water and sewer, we did receive water comments from the water district and have addressed those as well. We have not done a formal submission to sewer department, but we will certainly be submitting to them in the future. The final is about the parking spaces, which there was a conflict between the number shown on the plans versus the waiver request, and all this is addressed in the agreement in more complete detail. The Mary D. Stone School comments were very similar, again, impervious area calculation, setback lines, zoning summary table, there was a discrepancy in the building height, which has been remedied, and we're not in a wetland protection area. Comment 5, the stormwater calculations did not quite comply with the configuration shown on the plans, so the total area is shown there, but the breakdown is not completely developed. But we know that we will be doing stormwater infiltration, and based with our, based on our preliminary discussions, we're infiltrating the roof and not the pavement because it's cleaner water, and I think we're on the right track for that one. Additional soil testing will be needed for the infiltration system to determine if there's a little high groundwater, this is something that's required with infiltration systems, and we'll be doing when the time comes closer. This site is also in a Zone 2 public water supply, so we'll have to comply with the storage regulations of that. Again, we'll be complying with the Mass DEP Stormwater Standards, further develop our water quality structure detail. Number 10 comment was about a door swinging into the access driveway, so we'll look closer into that as we coordinate the building with the site a little further. And then, new driveway exit at Church Street, we'll have to look at the driveway exit and how that interacts with the sidewalk, and make sure it's an appropriate connection. The retaining wall adjacent to the Town Hall parking lot is, we'll have to deal with the stormwater in between the school site and the Town Hall site, because there will be some sort of blockage there, we'll need some extra catch basins to collect and treat the stormwater from there. The electrical transformer pad and trash enclosure have not been fully coordinated yet, we've heard some concerns about the location, and we'll have to vet that more formally as we move forward, find out what the best location is for both of them. The retaining wall proposal on the west side of the site, there was a concern that it was close to the existing retaining wall. The retaining wall that we're looking at on the west side is really more of a glorified curb, it's only, you know, 18 inches high, but we'll definitely be cognizant of the existing retaining wall. We've already heard concerns about how our site might impact it, so we'll be careful to pay attention to what we might be doing to it and mitigate any impacts. Lastly, again, they acknowledged that it's a schematic design set and not fully developed. Again, asking for a summary of the impervious areas, further broken down, did not review water and sewer connections, which will be done by the water and sewer districts, and then the number of parking spaces again has been clarified in the draft agreement.
Okay, I'm just gonna go around, determine if anyone has any questions, Mr. Cussey?
No, I think Caleb should be able to follow up on the final plans, right? I mean, once this is all said and done, it'll be followed up by the building inspectors. I'm good.
Mr. Chikola?
All set.
The same, all set. Ms. Roach?
I'm good.
Ms. Place?
All set.
Okay. So I think that's phase one, seems to be accomplished. Can introduce yourself, sir, and talk about what you're gonna...
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Paul Havity, Blatman, Bobrovsky, and Havity representing the applicant. I did just want to point out with regard to all of the issues that were just discussed from the peer review comment letter, in the draft decision, actually it's for the Julia Bancroft on page 10, there is a provision that discusses the submittal of the final plans, and it does state at minimum, "The final plan shall be in accordance with the comments from the peer review consultants," detailed, and it says while the hearing, it should say during the hearing, and if you want to make that change on both drafts, it should say during the hearing. But the purpose of that is so that we can encompass all of the comments that were raised by the peer review consultant during the process, and once final plans are submitted, those will have to be addressed as part of those submittals.
Okay, I do see that, thank you.
And Charlie, unless we had anything else to present tonight, I don't know if the board wants to discuss the draft decision at all, if they had any questions or concerns, any portions of it that they'd like further explanation?
Well, I think specifically we'd like to talk about, at least for myself, the concerns of the abutters and how you plan on addressing those, and where they stand in the decisions. So we had somebody that was concerned about possibility of light entering their property from cars around the Mary D. Stone area.
Yeah, and there is a condition, which one was that again?
Mary D. Stone. Thank you, excuse me.
So I know that there is a condition responsive to that. Yes, E-24, page 17, "The applicant shall meet with the budding property owners regarding potential for car lights flashing onto their properties. If feasible, the final plan shall include appropriate fencing or landscaping to address this concern."
Yes, thank you, okay. Just quickly, so E-24, page 17, does that satisfy everyone's requirements?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I would submit that just by even addressing some of these things, and, you know, the applicant in good faith has come forward with this, I mean, there's, there are comments on some of the trees, I mean, it seems systematically that they've gone through in a very thoughtful way to make accommodations, or at least plan to have discussions around the points that have been raised, and so, I'm for one appreciative of how they've stepped through that.
Okay, and we want some comments we got on that? No? Okay.
One, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, please.
Just one other thing in terms of decisions that we did try to do is, ultimately we can't control us ourselves, but we're gonna work hard, because we did put some language in there that we would work hard for, we'd try to get a 70% preference for Auburn residents and people working in Auburn, and that's, that's the most that the state will allow in any one community, and it's really a HUD-driven issue, so that's what we're gonna be looking for and seeking and trying to get. Ultimately, as I said, we can't control whether or not they'll give us that, but that's our goal and our problem.
So what the draft decision states is that there shall be a local preference of up to 70%, but it acknowledges that that local preference is subject to the approval by the subsidizing agency, and essentially what they do in the process is they enforce fair housing laws and make sure that the local preference isn't going to wind up being more restrictive than necessary. They may ask the town to provide some information supporting the need for the local preference. That's something that's done after the permit has been issued, and certainly the applicant is willing to help provide any information to assure that you get the highest possible local preference that the town can get, but it is, in a way, out of the applicant's hands and out of the board's hands.
Sure.
Because ultimately, control over that issue resides with the subsidizing agency.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you putting that out.
But you can't get that 70%, you know, maximum unless you put it in the decision, so we have it in there for you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so that's covered on page 9, section B4, and again, I would just submit, just from my perspective, I mean, I was extremely impressed that that was added, recognizing that there are elements of that that are out of our hands, out of your hands and out of your control. I think it's extremely thoughtful and meticulous writing in benefit of the town. Thank you, gentlemen.
You too. Okay, I think I'd like to turn it over and see if we have any abutters that would like to comment. Do we have any abutters that would like to speak? May I have you introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and then speak about your concerns?
Hi, my name is Linda Chauvin, I live on Arrowhead Ave. I am located directly behind the proposed building, and I believe my husband was here supporting our family regarding this, and he told me that there was a formal recommendation from the town to Penrose Properties to put up a privacy fence. I know you kind of slightly touched on that. I mean, I'm just curious where that stands.
Okay, I think that's the one we already did discuss, Mr. Chairman. The trees or the landscaping or the fence, that was that?
Okay.
So I think that we talked, page 17?
E-24.
Right, E-24. "The applicant shall meet with the budding property owners regarding potential for car lights flashing onto their properties. If feasible, the final plan shall include appropriate fencing or landscaping to address this concern."
Okay.
So it's actually written right into the decision for you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other abutters? Yes, sir. Again, if you could introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm RJ Scazza, I reside at 11 Church Street, directly across the street from Mary D. Stone School. At the last meeting, I had asked if there was gonna be one means of entrance and exit on the Church Street side of, or the front of the building, and I was told that there was going to be only one means. I'm looking at the design now, I'm assuming that that's Mary D., is that still the case? Because right now, Mary D., you can only enter the grounds to the right side of the building if you're facing the building. Is there gonna be a new means of entrance and exit on the left side of the building?
Well, so, the plans I submitted from the beginning always included two means of entry and exit. I'm not sure if that was maybe overlooked and maybe didn't present it properly, but it's always been there?
Okay, I think there was just maybe confusion in the way that I worded it last time, because I was under the, I understood it to be different, I thought that there was only gonna be still as it exists, you can only get onto the property on the right-hand side of Mary D. Stone School. So my concern is, if I could just explain my concern, so I have the residences directly across the street, and my driveway would be on one side, and then my tenants' driveway, because it's a duplex, would be on the other side, so with a new means of entrance and exit, that would be on the left-hand side if you're facing Mary D. Stone School, there is already compromising traffic concerns, and if the tenant is pulling out, for instance, if someone is parked on the other side of the street, there's already been accidents because there's only so much space between being parked, parallel parked on the opposite side of the street, and how much room there is for the tenant to back out of their driveway. So now, if directly across from the tenants' driveway, you have traffic flow coming either in and out of the premises, that's gonna just compromise the traffic flow and the safety of the tenant altogether, so I'm just concerned about that.
So, I think as we talked about it at the last meeting, Caleb actually pointed out, we discussed the possibility of parking signs, and Caleb pointed out that with the configuration there, there'd be practically no way to park directly across the street from your house at that curb site between those two driveways. So in effect, you'll actually be getting a no parking zone in between those two driveways.
And the no parking is great, and very much appreciated. It's the fact that now the residents would be entering and exiting from that, from the Church Street side is what my concern would be, so if people are bringing up concerns on Arrowhead that there's gonna be traffic, or there's gonna be headlights that are gonna be shining into their backyards or into their houses and their windows, essentially I'm gonna have traffic coming with no means for a privacy fence or anything like that, and there's only about 25 feet of distance between that exit and my, in front of my house and my tenants' driveway.
And I think if you look at that picture up there, your house, excuse me, would be, I believe, on the higher end of the driveway, correct? So you see that's basically a horseshoe shaped, if you will?
Yep, yep.
And the traffic flow is only gonna have one directional, so they'll be able to go in at what I would consider of this picture, the top section, and go out at the bottom.
Right.
So that should prevent, at least minimize the amount of headlight.
So, but they'll be coming out at the bottom, and that will be the, you know, the headlights that are coming right at the house, or shining right into the house, and, I mean, if you can just imagine the tenant backing out of the driveway, and it's almost like it's lying directly across from each other, so the residents are gonna be pulling out, the tenant could be backing out, the headlights or the, whatever, is gonna be shining right into the house, it's like a direct parallel. And to this point, there hasn't been two means of entrance and exit at Mary D. Stone School since I've resided there, it's been 20 years now, and again, I'm just confused because I thought, I was told last time at the meeting, I didn't see the original design, but that there wasn't going to be. So that's just a concern that I have, you know, obviously it's a legitimate one, speaking from a resident that lives directly across the street, obviously it's gonna, I always thought that the majority of the traffic flow would be coming in from Town Hall, I didn't know if you had an agreement worked out with this new project where residents would be able to come in essentially from Central Street, cut through the Town Hall parking lot to get to the parking lot to this new complex, and that would be the majority of the traffic flow, but now it's my understanding that the majority of the traffic flow to enter this complex and to exit is gonna be on the Church Street side, again, directly 25 feet across the street from where my house is, it's just a concern.
Okay, were any of you care to address that? That's a little beyond my understanding of that side of the project, so.
So, I'm sorry, apologize for the confusion, there is only one entrance in and one entrance out, so it is a little different than it is now, but it's not two-way traffic, through the chair, of course, through, on both roads, so it is a one-way loop. And with respect to the driveway aligning with, or the school housing building driveway aligning with the residential driveway, it's actually safer to have them across from each other, because you can see each other coming and going, either, you either want trafficways aligned or 100 feet apart, so, I mean, residential, obviously you don't always have that situation, but on a busier road, it is best to be aligned like we are with most of our streets, so you know that you're, you can see the traffic approaching if you're backing out. The, there is a connection to the Town Hall, and that will be maintained, but that won't be the main connection to this site, and then we did do a traffic evaluation of the traffic expected here, and it's much less than when it was a school, even though, actually, this configuration of a one-way flow is more efficient than a school with the two-way in and out, because then you'd have cars all the way up and down Church Street, causing a lot more traffic issues than you have with a senior housing building with a one-way loop, so it's, it really will be an improvement. I know it's not an improvement from nothing being there, but compared to alternative uses, it'll be much less of a traffic impact.
So I think off the top of my head, I'm just proposing if the applicant might be in the abutter, where this lower exit is, if they just sort of put up a sign that says "Right turn only," that way they're not delayed waiting for traffic to go up the hill, they could just literally take a right turn, go right down the street, that could minimize the amount of time spent at the end of the driveway. I think that might be a reasonable conclusion.
Mr. Chairman, yes, and I do appreciate your continued support of the abutters. You know, the one thing I would just say is that there continues to be reference to traffic analysis with comparison to the school traffic that would have been there, and now with the traffic that will be there with a 55-plus unit complex, and again, having familiarity with school systems, I know that the primary time of traffic is at arrival between 8:30 and 9 o'clock, and dismissal at 3:00 in the afternoon and 3:30 PM, so that's when you'll have the buses, and that's when you'll have the parent pickup, but aside from that, you have very limited traffic. But now you have a complex of great size that is going to be directly across the street from my residence, nearly directly across the street from the church, and you're going to have just a cluster of a situation during certain hours of the day, and not to mention that Church Street itself has become a speedway throughout the course of the years, I mean, it's just a concern that now there's gonna be a means of entrance and exit, even if it's a right turn only coming directly onto Church Street, and it's not just during school hours or peak school hours, if you will, it could be at any time of the day and any time of the night, so that's my continued concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I understand your concern, but I think the traffic study illustrated fairly well that, you know, it should be a minimum impact, actually probably improvement in the traffic area of the neighborhood, and also quite honestly, I mean, like this time of year, I mean, I'm not 55 years old, but I get home, I get my stuff done, and I hang out, I mean, I'm not running to the store every 20 minutes, I'm not driving in and out, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be anything like a mall impact, where you're gonna have people, you know, flowing in and out, just, you know, not like a drive-through. I think, I honestly think you'll find it'll have pretty minimal impact.
And I truly do hope that you're correct, and, you know, I don't mean to be flip with the whole matter, but you see in the news, and I'm pleased that it's an elderly housing facility, to be honest with you, that gives me some comfort, but you see in the news very often that elderly drivers are driving through storefront windows, so this is an entrance that is directly across the street, regardless of my house, regardless of the time of day or the headlights and shining on my house, or not having a, whatever those matters might be, it's just a concern that that is gonna be the main means of exit from that building, and hopefully, all of the residents do come home at a reasonable time, and like you, Mr. Chairman, they are settled in for the night at a reasonable time, but, you know, that's speculation.
I don't know that for sure. What I do know is that there may be at least 55 vehicles, or maybe that's an overshot, but there could be roughly 55 vehicles, 55 residents at least that could be coming out of that right turn only exit at any time of the day directly across the street from my house.
Okay. Thank you. John, would you care to address those?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, you know, the, you know, the concerns there. The, the, I think till you hit the nail on the head though, I mean, there's not going to be a lot of traffic coming out of this facility. I mean, with the traffic study, it's, it's, 55 units actually is not a lot of units. I know it's a lot here for this particular development, but in the grand scheme of multifamily buildings, it's actually not a lot of units. And so there won't be a lot of traffic. We're happy to look at a right turn only situation. I'd prefer really not to commit to that.
Sure.
That does kind of create kind of a marketing issue too. I mean, if someone has to constantly, if they always want to go left and they, they have to go right and that, that could be, can be extremely frustrating. So I'd, if, you know, if you'd allow us to sort of look at that a little bit more in terms of what the, you know, how, how, how much traffic actually will be there.
And I would actually, and also again, just a suggestion.
Okay.
But I also think that just naturally, because most of the, I think the areas they're going to grocery stores, malls.
They're going to be going right for the most part, yes.
They're going to be taking a right and going down probably anyway.
Right, right.
I think that would probably present the natural traffic flow.
That's right. And so then we wouldn't necessarily even need to have it, right? Because it's already going to be going that way anyways.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
And I appreciate comments being made and certainly the commentation. I think it's a really interesting proposal that we took, let's take a look at a right turn only. I wanted to ask Matt, Caleb, I mean, through the site planning process, there'll be additional site planning, traffic flow consideration being made through that process. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's going to be additional peer reviews and we can certainly have a look at that, whether it's feasible or whether there would be any benefit to it.
Thank, thank you for that, Kim. So I would, I would submit that this process doesn't end here. There's an opportunity to vet, I think, a lot of those activities, particularly with traffic flow. And I, and I want to call attention to with this particular gentleman, the Abutter, and I apologize, I don't, I didn't commit his last name to memory. But this gentleman who's spoken eloquently a couple of different times now with his, his careful concerns. And I, I too, when we saw the day of the traffic flow data last time from an engineering perspective, I, I had concerns in whether or not we were really comparing respectfully apples and wrenches. We're not going back to a school scenario. And to compare it to a school scenario on traffic flow, I think points that have been raised on the time of day, those are valid points.
Absolutely.
On what we could make as a predictive value. I also don't want to overly invest in, in the predictive value of habits of folks of, of what we're going to truly see as, as patterns. But I think the applicant's done a fair job of trying to explain what they perceive to be the pattern flow with, with their experience in these types of developments. So I would submit that, that some of this through the thoughtful comments of the Abutter, that, that there will be a, a forward process where the traffic flow will be further examined for the best outcomes.
I agree. Thank you. Well said.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is in the draft decision on page 17 for the Mary D. Stone project, F2, there's actually a blank space there that says "site-specific traffic condition."
I do see that.
So we can add a, a condition that states that the applicant shall examine the possibility of making a right turn only onto Church Street.
Okay.
And see whether that's feasible and address that as part of the final plan supplemental.
Okay. Do we have any, any other Abutters that would like to speak regarding this project? Either Mary D. or JB? Okay. Stand by one minute. Okay, just one more time around the horn. Mr. Cussi, do you have any final comments or concerns?
I don't.
Mr. Chacolo?
I'll sit.
Mr. Maron?
I don't, thank you.
Ms. Roach?
I'm good. I'll sit.
I'll sit, okay.
Yes. Sorry. Through the chair, just a point of clarification. When we did the, through the chair to the applicant, when we did the reviews for the follow-ups, for the peer reviews, we didn't go over Julia Bancroft yet, right? We just did Mary D.
We did.
We did both. You did it very quick. Good job.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were both done.
Yeah, I thought I heard her say number 10 twice. I wasn't sure.
Appreciate you being thorough, but we're good.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
So this is going to be handled in two separate votes. We'll be voting on the Mary D. Stone project first and then the Julia Bancroft project second, for recording purposes. So just a quick review here for the applicant, Penrose Properties LLC, requesting 40B comprehensive permits for a property known as the Mary D. Stone School located at 10 Church Street, MAP 49, parcel 116. Do I have a motion on the Mary D. Stone School application?
I'll make a motion to approve with the amendment that you just have to look at the right turn only.
Okay.
As written in our, in the application for decision.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I would second, Mr. Chairman, with consideration to the information in the peer reviews and the comments that the applicant had made based on their consideration of slight modifications that have been noted this evening. But all of that considered, and I think in earnest they, they commit to do those things. I would make a second under those conditions.
Great, thank you. Okay. Mr. Cussi?
Grant.
Ms. Roach?
Grant.
And I agree, I also grant. So the second one, Julia Bancroft, I'll reread again for the record.
Mr. Taylor?
Applicant, Penrose Properties LLC, requesting 40-
Excuse me, through the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Apologize. So we only closed one hearing so far, yet to close the second.
Okay, so I do have a motion to close the second public hearing for JB.
Motion to close the second public hearing for JB, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So the Penrose Properties LLC requesting 40B comprehensive permits for a property known as Julia Bancroft School located at 3 Vinyl Street, MAP 10, Lot 68. Is there a motion for the application?
I'll make another motion to approve, grant the application as written in the decision, application, the decision for application.
Thank you.
As stated that we have here.
Okay. And I have a second from Ms. Roach. Mr. Maron, your vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussi?
I'll grant.
And obviously you already did, so, and yes, I grant. So congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Good luck. I appreciate all of your interest in satisfying the neighbors and the Abutters and answering all of our questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good luck. Good evening.
Chairman, we have signature pages. Do you want to do them at the end or do you want?
Yeah, we'll do them. So that one's all set. We're just going to let them clear out a little bit. has a interesting opportunity for the members of the board. I'd like to go over with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forwarded this to the members of the zoning board. In between our last meeting and tonight's meeting, there is a Chapter 40B workshop on our horizon.
Yeah.
That we understand that, and the board's done a fabulous job with the application before it this evening. There's some opportunity for additional, I'll call it, training or at least a workshop by one of the leading consultants for these things, the one who wrote the handbook that we've been following, Judy Barrett, will be presenting at this workshop. And it's a good opportunity to brush up on anything that's more technical. If we were ever to get a larger project in town that's controversial to any degree, we'll be able to cover any of the bases for things that we didn't have to cover for this project. So this is being held on Monday, November 27th, from six, starts at 6:30 PM. And it's at the Amazing Things Arts Center in Framingham. I will be attending and if anyone else is interested to attend, I'd be happy to accompany you, so.
So if anybody's interested in that, we could possibly get together in Carpool. It's the November 27th. We do have obligations at my household on Monday nights, but I can probably make some arrangements given it that far out. From 6:30 to 8:30, it's not that big of a commitment and I think it might clear up a lot of the questions that we've had during this process. And the event we have any future issues that come up, might be beneficial to the whole board.
I absolutely agree. I mean, this is a great opportunity for us to, as we've stated before, this is not the first, this won't be the last hearing of its kind. And so anything as far as education that we can arm ourselves with.
Oh, it's fresh.
And you know, anytime we can get in the room with the person that wrote the handbook, basically, and answer those questions, so I think that's a good opportunity.
I just asked a Tom Planner, does, does he know through the chair, will there be snacks? There better be.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the 7:15, I apologize, we're, yeah, a little bit. So the 7:15 applicant, Sweb Development USA LLC, requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.4.0 of the Urban Zoning Bylaws for the development of a 6-megawatt solar voltaic installation on a property located at 430 Rochdale Street, Autumn Mass, MAP 37, parcel 7. And this is also a continuation from the October 19th, 2017 meeting, if the applicant present. You going to approach the lectern and bring us up to speed on your project, please, sir? Do I have a motion, open hearing?
Motion, open hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just going to get our presentation.
Sure.
On the big screen real quick.
Um, can we get the other one taken down just so, there we go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Got paper and digital options tonight.
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, sounds great. Well, thanks again for coming out, guys who are here tonight and the board. We are Sweb Development. My name is Michael Carey, here with my colleague Rory Cantwell, Director of Development for the company. Sarah Rosenblatt is the Project Coordinator, Thomas Elson Winger, who's Head of Solar, and Ryan Green from Weston Sampson. Weston Sampson is our Engineering Consultant. So here tonight to discuss our solar project on Rochdale Street. Just real quick background, just as a reminder, we are the North American arm of an Austrian company. So we're an IPP. We basically own and operate primarily wind projects, but we're taking a stronger look at solar in North America lately. So, and this is one of our potential projects here. See our facility up on the big screen, run by Solar. Yeah, quick site overview. This is the property that we are looking at on Rochdale Street. Rochdale Street is here, running along the right-hand side of the, of the image. The full installation will be in the fields that we see, the kind of baseball mitted fields, right in the center there. The solar will be the primary use of the site. And yeah, we intend to connect down High Street here and connect to the power lines that run up and down Rochdale Street. As you can see, it's a fairly large property. We have about 120 acres, of which only about 25, I believe, would be behind the fence for the solar project. Here's what it will look like with the modules in place. Modules will be facing directly south with the interconnection running down, again, High Street. We'll have some string inverters running behind the modules in certain places. And by and large, it will not be visible from Rochdale Street. For the most part, the project is tough to see. Two of the neighbors will have a view. But yeah, you know, I grew up in the area and it was unbeknownst to me until we started working on this that there was a field up there. This site is actually very well-suited. The new regulations that are coming out in Massachusetts have a cap on the size of solar projects and this field is exactly the size you need for that, for that installation. So we're very fortunate to have, to have found this site, I guess you could say. In terms of logistics and transport, roughly 53 trucks will be needed and these will be the 53-foot transport trucks. This is based on the square footage we need on our pallets, how the modules are shipped as well as the racking. Could be more, could be less than 53. We'll, we're only going to transport between the hours of 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM to avoid school and, and traffic, you know, commuting time. And our traffic route will be a bit circuitous to avoid any congestion in certain intersections. So we'll come off 290, hop on Route 20 down to 56 and up on to, up to Mill Street, Rochdale Street from there. And this will allow us to avoid that notorious West Street to Rochdale Street intersection. I don't know how many of you guys have to navigate that as part of your commute, but yeah, we're, we wouldn't want to congest that up. So further to answer some questions that were raised the last time we were here, there was a few specific questions that some of the Abutters wanted to discuss and us to look, have a closer look at. So we did look at glare from the project. The only area, the only glare that will come off the project is roughly about 2% of incoming light. Solar modules are made to absorb light, not to reflect it. Based on this diagram, we can see for, for the vast majority of the time, glare would be passing up and over the house that's on the other side of the hill. This image will represent, this image represents our project on the right, or sorry, on the left, Rochdale Street, kind of in that dip in the middle. And one of the Abutters across Rochdale Street, up on Crow Hill. So there'll be a very small man of the year where glare from the project could be seen at that house in question. However, at those times of year, the sun would actually be at such an angle that it would over, overtake any of the glare that could be impacting the house. So, so yeah, we had a question about noise as well. The inverters and transformers are the only part of the project that make any noise. When we do these presentations, it's usually for wind projects. We have a lot, usually have a lot more questions about this aspect. However, these are fairly quiet installations. I'm not sure how many solar installations you folks have managed to see and walk up to around the state. They're fairly quiet. So from 10 feet away from the, from the electrically, electrical equipment, you're hitting about 55 decibels, which is comparable to a refrigerator, depending on how loud your particular refrigerator is, I suppose. So yeah, 60 dB, it's about the sound of a human voice. So we're, you know, we're looking with levels of noise that shouldn't be heard at any, you know, on any of the abutting properties. The sound of the wind or, yeah, just basic household noises tend to be louder than what we produce. Further question was, um...
Can I just ask before you're setting up, and I don't mean to interrupt.
Sure.
Going back to the glare, is it possible to direct them and sort of reposition or re-point them in a different direction? And I'm only asking this for my own, for my own concern, for the Abutters?
Definitely.
Is it possible to redirect them so they wouldn't be facing the Abutters property?
Well, the thing about the orientation of the modules is that in order to get the maximum amount of sunlight, we do have to be pointing south. So that was one of the, the questions as well. Would it be possible to reorient the, the modules? The project economics do make it tough to point them anything but south because we do lose a substantial, fairly substantial amount of, of production.
Okay.
So yeah, we, the economics we ran did show that we probably wouldn't be able to make it work if we were aligned in any other direction, so apologies for that. Yeah. Does it answer your question?
It did, yes, thank you.
Okay. Another question was to do with EMF, electromagnetic fields. Now, we do produce electromagnetic fields from these projects, however, they are fairly low, you know, comparable to the output of household appliances. So again, refrigerators, toasters, things in your kitchen would tend to give off a comparable amount of electromagnetic energy. And to such a point that, to such a, to such a small degree that nothing would be crossing any, any property line, certainly. low, you know, comparable to the output of household appliances. So again, refrigerators, toasters, things in your kitchen would tend to give off a comparable amount of electromagnetic energy, and to such a point that, to such a small degree that nothing would be crossing any property line, certainly. And last question, and obviously an important one, is property values and screening. Now, we did dig into some of the research that's been done across North America in terms of potential impacts that ground-mounted solar projects could have on local property values. We found a few studies. We haven't found any studies that say, that have shown a negative impact. We've only found negligible impacts. And this is also backed up by the Department of Energy's brochure or pamphlet on solar that was put out, I think, last year. So they dug into this research as well, and found that there was a negligible impact on property values. Now, this is just one study, but it is, I guess, the best we could do to answer that, those questions. We do intend to screen the project wherever possible. One of the southern abutters is located in such an angle to the property that it's going to be fairly easy to put in screening, and that's in the site plans. The neighbor across the street, it's a bit harder to get trees tall enough on our property to get up that high. However, we are still discussing potential ways to solve that problem, and see if there's any kind of trees we could put in. It's, again, it's hard on our property to do that, maybe on the neighbor's property or if the neighbors have it willingness. But yeah, we're still looking for the best possible solution to screen the project fully. So, yeah, that's our slideshow. And yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, do you have any questions?
Yeah. What about shifting this whole project north? You know, clearing some, which just, for the neighbors, that's like, the one neighbor's really going to be looking directly at these things, and it's, it is a bit of an eyesore.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at them, I like them, but I'm just, looking at them, I wouldn't want to be like, seeing them every day in front of my house.
Definitely.
You know, because they're out, the woods behind it, you know?
Yeah.
You could clear it and shift it all back, you know, 500 feet or flat back there.
So there was, we did get the idea just earlier, this evening actually, to move the project, shift the project north. We would be going into the trees, I guess I use the mouse a little bit here, hopefully the viewers at home can see. Shift the project northward. We do have some acreage up here. We don't like to clear trees whenever we don't have to, so that's one of the reasons why we kept on this field. It's something we could look into. Again, it would have an effect on the, obviously, on the economics of the project, as well as increased runoff, just by, you know, virtue of having to clear trees. It might be tough to move the entire project northward. Westward would be, westward would probably not be an option, because this drops off fairly quickly. It's a fairly abrupt drop-off here, as you get towards Leicester. But we can certainly look into, looking, moving the project northward. It's not something we previously contemplated, but something we can...
You know, it's nice and open and ready to go.
Yeah.
Moving it north stays, you know, the grade stays pretty flat and still catch the sun and...
Yeah, it's an interesting proposal, definitely. That's something we could look into. It would be hard to not use any of the fields. I mean, if we were to shift northward, we would still be bringing some of those southern modules up, potentially. But it's something we can run the numbers on and have a look at, absolutely.
If it is shifted north and you're removing trees, those trees, as it is, provide cooling. And I was reading the Massachusetts study that was done where, when the tornado came through Southbridge, Sturbridge area, and that the ambient temperature in that, those areas, for that area that it went through, after the trees were destroyed, the average ambient temperature increased. So I would want you to look at that consideration also, if you are considering moving it north.
Absolutely. Yeah, we tend to, you know, avoid cutting down trees wherever possible. I imagine that we'll, you know, find it more favorable to try to screen the project rather than shift and have an impact on the forest.
The reason I mention it is because it's going to raise the temperature of the residents that live right there, as it is. That, I wouldn't want that to affect them.
Definitely, yeah.
Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, can we go back to your glare slide and the optics on Slide 7?
Absolutely.
Without sounding tedious, I'd like to know what backs up this data. You explained, and this is, you know, I'm doing this because I'm assuming that the director abutter across here identifying here is primarily for his benefit.
Absolutely.
And so I'm asking these questions specifically for his benefit to truly understand, and we've got some lunar-solar indications here. So I'd like to know, you know, the genesis of some of that data. So how are you predicting that you're going to eliminate that glare to his property in proximity to time of day and lunar schedules?
Actually, the generators of this diagram are sitting right. I'm, Thomas, do you want to talk about your backstory here?
And feel free to be as technical as you'd like, I can handle it.
Well, most time of the year and most time of the day, it is, in this constitution, it's not a big issue. The only issue is if the sun is in the west, exactly in the west, and this is what is seen here. And one question was if we should move from south to another direction. West is not a better direction for the abutter here, because if we would move it to another angle, it could be, have more effect than the south orientation. So what is shown here is the extremes. What is the worst case? This is a worst case here, where the sun is, it's closer, the sun is down, it's more effective for this. But this is physics, if the radiation, the sun being, it would be reflected in the same angle. So here, even if the sun is very low, it has no effect here to the abutter here. The only thing, when it can, when it has an effect is if the sun is very, very low, let's say almost just behind the modules, and even then, you see here, this is the sunbeam from the module, and it's reflected above the abutter. And of course, it cannot be 100% avoided, there's a little bit of glare. But the sun behind is much, much stronger than the reflected sunbeam from the cell, from the module, because as we've heard, it's just a small percentage which will be reflected. So just in this very limited case, it's indeed very limited, in that case, it is above the abutter, and in any case, the sun is much, much stronger, so it will, the glare will come from the sun and not from the modules itself. So this setting is not so bad, not bad at all in terms of glare, I would say.
Okay. So a couple of things, just for consideration. So from, and thank you, and I appreciate your thoughtful responses. So, and I thought that that's where you were going with this. So that's entirely, and I'm not putting you through the paces on purpose, because absolutely, I'm not trying to challenge your technical data, but that theoretically is completely dependent on your assumptions on where that sun lands in proximity and alignment to his house, and how those angles reflect. So I understand what you're displaying here, but the predictive value that it's going to be minimal based on the proximity of his house, I mean, we need to take some specific measurements, wouldn't we, right? So to actually make those predictions. What I guess I'm getting at is, I appreciate the thought behind this, but I don't want to, I don't want to emphasize that we can actually predict here how this is going to affect this gentleman's house based on our expectations of where that sun's going to be in proximity to his home at different times. I mean, this is far more complex and calculative to predict those things than what we're explaining, and I just want to recognize that. I also appreciate that your accent makes this sound super smart. So I'm not, I'm not in any way trying to challenge what you're showing. I do think that there's validity here, but I would just suggest to my board members respectfully, the calculations behind this, to actually predict what they're suggesting, are far more complex than what's being suggested.
Sure. I appreciate that, and thank you. And not to jump on this, but, and I hate to use the term, but does this reflect on the time of day?
Absolutely.
Time of year.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, and in my, and I am not a physicist, although I spent a lot of time in those classes, so, and my information is somewhat dated, I don't use it every day. But, but what I'm suggesting is that those calculations and those refracted angles, it depends on where his house is in proximity to where those panels land.
Sure.
And it depends on incrementally where that sun lands at different time of day and year.
Right.
So the predictive nature of what you're suggesting is true, but less predicted, and I just don't want the abutter to walk with a sense of, this has been calculated out, and it truly is a minimalistic approach.
Well, I picture the old sundial in my head, and that's how that would work, with the time of day, the reflection, the time of year.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And so the variables to map this out in a pivot PowerPoint and a pivot spreadsheet would take a week.
Sure.
And probably take me three months. But, you know, anecdotes aside, I just, my point is respectfully, I agree with you that there is a predictive benefit, but it would depend on where the math lies on something like this succinctly. And I'm not asking you to agree or disagree. I appreciate your responses, but I just want to make sure that we're not making the assumptions that this is being predictive of, you know, a far better scenario for the abutters. This is far more complex than this picture depicts, in my opinion.
No, and I appreciate that, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
You've, you've got, as Mike mentioned, you've got some predictive angles there. Is there, with past, past projects that you've done, is there any empirical data that you have to back up what you've got here?
This is, you fully agree, this is a simplified model, and for this specific project, we didn't have a scientific glare study done. What I can say is that we have glare studies done already, and based on these results, we would see the glare relatively minimized on this location, but we don't have this scientific glare study done so far for this project.
So from past projects, there's really no empirical data that you have?
For that project, no.
Can you tell me, from your diagram up there, just how far that line is that you have, the distance to the house?
I think we measured...
And then possibly you can back into some of the calculations that Mr. Maron wanted?
This is 1,400 feet, more or less.
1,400 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I would suggest, Mr. Chaco, if we get in, we're really digressing. My point to raise this is, and I'm not putting you through the paces on purpose, just that I wanted to suggest that this model would need to be backed up by empirical data to suggest where that house lands in proximity to this. I also would suggest that if they've got some history here in doing these types of things, and they can predict that it would be better and not worse, then I would respect that. But how much better, you know, I think the modeling would have to be done, and I'm not even sure that it would be beneficial to carry that all the way out empirically, but I just want to suggest to the abutter that has these concerns, that this may not answer all of his questions. Respectfully.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Ms. Rokes, do you have anything to add?
I do. So if the original, let's say it's done exactly where it was proposed, without any shifting in direction, will any trees need to be moved? What's the disruption to the current site if it is approved as is?
So there is a small amount of clearing, and Ryan, just give me a thumbs up, a thumbs down if I get something wrong here. A bit on the northern edge and a bit on the western edge, I believe.
Members of the board, Ryan Green, Weston Sampson. Yeah, so there's a small patch in the middle of the site that's kind of brushy, it's not like heavily settled woods. And then to the north, you can see it, it's a little blurry here, but...
Just going to jump up to the last slide there, right?
Yeah, okay, perfect. So pretty much just trimming along the edges. If we can get an actual acreage, only eight acres of clearing for the footprint of the project being 20.5 acres. Usually you're clearing like a log, landfill, TB development, which is why this is a great site, because with the amount of clearing you're not doing and the size, it's, it's a pretty good existing condition setup. And then along the limits, we have protection for the abutters for erosion control. I believe we have a silt fence and straw wattle set up going in there, because there's steep topography along the edges. So the abutters should be protected under any rain event that occurs. But overall, the land disturbance is not that much compared to the overall project size.
And what about, so our packet that we got said access is provided through a 24-foot wide, and it's a 20-foot wide gravel access road. What needs to be done for that road, the access road, to actually be able to be passable, and who maintains that over time?
Right. So it'll be developed to be able to handle a semi-truck to come and deliver panels. So there is an existing road there that's pretty compact, which gives us a pretty good subgrade to deal with.
Can you point that out on the map, if you know? Do you know where that is?
The actual access road, yeah.
Just give it your best, oh, okay.
So you can see it here, and it's right in the central area of the site for either maintenance reasons, which is, how much is maintenance, like, once, every six months or something like that? Something like that. So it's minimal maintenance, like, once a project's complete, there's not going to be much traffic at all. But during construction, there's going to be access all around the site here, and then up to the middle to a hammerhead, and then down, so nothing along the perimeter, which is good, because that'll save on the overall square footage of that cover, which you could pretty much call impervious. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Just the in-and-out points are not directly abutting the neighbor. They're on the site, there's on a truck going by his house 10 feet from his window 50 times a day.
Right, yeah, yeah. Like, the semi-truck's not going to be coming down here. Most likely, they're going to probably stop around this area, and they'll unload the modules there and place them wherever, so, yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. Please?
Just a couple of quick questions. How long do you expect the project to take, to build the project?
Hi, my name is Sarah Rosenblatt. I'm another project developer, so I'm a little short, so I'm going to stand over here, if that's okay. So in terms of construction, there's actually two different phases. And the first phase is the site preparation. So that is exactly when we would build in that access road, and on top of that, that is when we would make sure that all of our stormwater management is in place already, so that it's effective when we're working through the construction itself, because it's a very key time for us. Then after, so site preparation will normally take about four to six weeks, and when I mean that, I mean five business, like, four times five business days. And then after that, depending on the state, we do have a very good site right now for this, the construction itself will take normally around 12 weeks. Now, we say, I say normally around 12 weeks of this specific time, and this is making sure that all of our shipments are arriving on time, there's no other contingencies that have been held up in the pipeline, things like that are just flowing naturally. But after about that time, it's just standard interconnection and... But after about that time, it's just standard interconnection, and then we don't touch the site until maintenance. And to answer your maintenance question a little bit further, in the first year, we have an operations and maintenance plan that will run the entire length of the project, which will be 20 years. And what that means is in the first year, we'll have more intensive maintenance. So, we'll have somebody on site every quarter, making sure that they're checking all of the equipment, making sure that the access road that we made is maintained. After that, we'll come out twice a year normally in the summer months to make sure that landscaping is down, and that no critters have gotten in or anything like that is out of sorts. And then we'll come through in the wintertime again to make sure that somebody is there checking on the equipment as well. On top of that, we also have a 24/7 control center that monitors these, all of our projects. And essentially, what they do is anytime that they see any discrepancies, even if it's at 3:00 in the morning, they'll let us know, and they'll send out an operations and maintenance team the next, like, as soon as somebody wakes that picks up the call, says, you know what, there's a debt, we need to get somebody out there, they'll be out there, like, dispatched really quickly. So, I hope that answers the maintenance, and I hope that sort of answered your question as well.
Yeah, it does. So, you know, roughly four or five months of construction every day going there, it's, it's quite a bit, but worth it. And you kind of answered a little bit, but security around it.
Absolutely. So, as you can see on the plan here, there will be a fence around the entirety of the array, and what we generally do is it has to follow the National Electric Code, so we make sure that it's at least six foot with either barbed wire or a seven-foot straight. And normally what we do is we'll raise it up a little bit, about six inches at the bottom, so that any critters that do need to get through can get through, but it's not large enough that, you know, a person could roll in and get under. We have been discussing the potential for a motion sensor light at the gate itself, but the reason that we're a little bit hesitant about that is because where we would put our gate would also have some visibility to the abutter that's right there, and, you know, if a deer walks by, because there is deer in the area, it would trigger the sensor, and we don't want the light to be shining for a deer. So, in that case, we've sort of been in discussion with them and making sure that they're comfortable with this plan as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just ask, so you mentioned a 20-year life expectancy. What is the company's policy or what are the responsibility of removing these panels at the end of the life expectancy?
Yes, great question. So, what we do is we set it up for a base of 20 years, and we normally try and look for an extension for longer than that. At the end of the time, we decommission, which is essentially the term that you're looking for here. So, what we would do is we have two different strings that we work with. We set up a decommission cost as soon as we start building, and we say, we're going to keep this for us. When we need, when we know we need to decommission, we have this cost set aside, and we'll make sure it gets done. On top of that, we generally post a decommission bond. So, if there's anything that the town comes forward with and says, hey, it's year seven, we need to shut down, this needs to happen, or, for example, something happens with our business, we can no longer support this PV plant, you will take the decommission bond, apply it, and that will pay for quite literally the removal of the entire site.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that decommission bond, I'm assuming that is calculated out to, to increase costs and fees for 20 years from now also, projected out?
Yes.
Okay.
And to add to that as well, the, it is likely we're...
Yeah.
Now, the racking and the modules are designed typically for longer than that, 20 years. Now, it is likely that once we have our, we have a 20-year power purchase agreement with National Grid, and that's kind of the, the financial backbone of the project. We haven't received it yet, but it's part of the new program that they're rolling out. At the end of the 20 years, it's typical to see new modules put on, maybe after 30 years, or after 20 years, a new power purchase agreement is signed. There's equipment up there, there's already an electrical interconnection, so it is possible to keep this site as a solar site, you know, for 50 years potentially. That's, we're getting into the future, so it's hard to fully predict what power rates are going to be then and whatnot. But, yeah, there is potential to keep rolling the project forward into, to new power purchase agreements.
And the bond we spoke of, is that already in the proposal here this evening?
It's not. We still have to, there's a few things we have to tease out with the assessors office that we've, we've started conversations on but haven't delved that deeply into just yet.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
How many years have you been in business?
SWEB was founded in 2000, correct me if I'm wrong, Thomas. Or WAB, 2009? 2006?
WAB was founded in 1995, so, with a little more than 90 years of experience.
Yep.
Solar portion, though, when did they start?
What's that?
Your solar portion. That wasn't, you know, top on everybody's list in 1995. When did you start getting into the solar business?
This is Thomas.
2007.
2007, yeah.
2007.
Because if I could dovetail on, Mr. Chairman, on their questions, I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Cussy, if you had a follow-up. But it, it's possible where the other board members are going, but I had similar questions. So, where I go with that is, you've been in this business for less than 20 years. How many of these sites have you decommissioned, if any?
We've not decommissioned a site.
Okay, so, so that's, that's clearly a projection and hypothetical on what you're going to do with these later.
It is, yes.
And I would submit to the board members, that's, because renewable energy is a relatively, can I say in the grand scheme of things, relatively new business, you know, over, that's relative, but in suggesting that, I would suggest that's fairly common, that we don't know yet. We truly don't know yet. It's kind of like, and I use the anecdote of, of the guy at Home Depot, no disrespect, that's always trying to get me to punch these on my roof, and I wave him away, because they don't have data beyond five years of what these things are going to look like. And, and I think, you know, in good faith, but when we start to predict what's going to happen in 20 years, I think from our perspective and trying to cover the town, our due diligence is to make sure that that bond's secured, that it does include inflation, or predictive inflation, which, Mr. Chairman, where you were going with it, because that predictive value of what they do in 20 years, respectfully, I think there are very few companies out there that have even hit that milestone yet.
Sure.
In this business.
Okay. I think I'd like to actually turn it over to the abutters and I'd like to hear from them, regarding their perspective on the project. Do we have any abutters that would like to speak? Yes, sir. If you could come to the lectern, introduce yourself, and talk about your concerns.
Yes, Ronnie Brooks, 425 Rochdale Street. And my main concern is that I'm going to be staring these in the face, and they're going to be caught at probably better than a 45-degree angle right towards me. To move it north, I'm not sure that they'd have to do that much cutting to, and there is, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I've worked with Mike a little bit, and if I could work with him, or he could come up, as I look across, there's a section that I can look at and maybe point out to him, and if they could just not have them there, but move them or relocate them to another area, that might solve the problem.
Okay. Is that something you'd be want to talk about?
Yes, sure.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, that's fine. If you just kind of keep the conversation through the chair, please, that's all. Mr. Brooks, on that map there, could you just point out for my purposes where your property lies? Okay, so that's your, that's your spot right there.
It's higher than they are, so I look right down at it.
Yeah, okay.
But if he came, I could show them and work with them.
There are trees in between.
Probably pinpoint some areas where if they could relocate just those, then it would maybe make it funny.
Okay. Can you, can you point that area out?
Got property line, the red box.
Yes.
And that's 120 or 165, or...
That's 120.
So, yeah. And if we could do that, then possibly they could come back and show to you what they were going to do, or how much they might have to cut off, so that they could relocate, so I would appreciate it.
Okay. Any other concerns, Mr. Brooks?
Just, you know, he touched on some of them, noise and some of those other things. It's mostly to be looking at it and just have that view, this whole mass of black looking at you. And, you know, I know there'll be construction time, and I'm sure they'll do it, and make it as fast as I can, and that's, you know, whatever it is, and then we won't see anything for a long time. But it's, that's the main concern, to move it back so I'm not looking at it, or they're not caught in my face, and I appreciate everyone's concern about the angles and all of that stuff, because, you know, normally, a normal person will go back and say, oh, yeah, I guess it's all right, you know, but I'm not sure that's the way it is.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am? If you could approach the lectern, introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
I'm Julie Karen. I'm at 20 High Street. We have property at 18 High Street and 470 Rochdale on the corner of High Street as well. And I'm here on behalf of my husband and myself to say that we're kind of excited about the idea of not having a neighborhood back there. We have no problem with the road going in, it's going to abut our property. The gate excites us to keep the people out of the field that are up there drinking, making all sorts of noise, shooting, not hearing us yell for them to stop, things like that. So, we just wanted to come on behalf and say, yes, don't worry about us, we're, we're pleased.
Okay.
Along with how long our development would take to build, and, yeah, so, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have any further concerns from the board? Mr. Cussy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Very possibly with the things that were touched on, Mr. Brooks might benefit from a copy of your slides that you have up here for reference. I'm asking them to give you a copy of the slides they referenced, so you'll have them for reference. Has you had questions that you said that they went over?
Mr. Marin?
No additional questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Ms. Blaze?
I'll sit. They give questions now.
Okay. You know, I think for me personally, if I was an abutter to this property, I would like to see as much work as I could to minimize my impact, obviously. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for dialogue between the applicant and the abutter, to determine if it's possible to move some of these, even small percentage or the relocation.
I would say, I would say definitely there are a couple of things left open. One, Mr. Cussy's issue where he suggested moving it, and the other issue that Mr. Marin brought up on furnishing us with any kind of empirical data that you have from your sites, other, other sites, anything that, that would give us some hard data. Those two things, I think, are open items.
Right. See, I think the, the concern of you seeing here with even previous hearings is that as Auburn tends to, people find it very attractive, they want to come here, they want to build projects regardless of what they might be. You know, we try to maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods, we try to maintain the privacy of the abutters when it comes to these things, especially as residents, and, you know, we can only imagine the impact if it was in our neighborhood. So, I think from my point of view, if we could possibly have you get together and come up with some solutions of the proposals that came up tonight, whether it be relocate some of them, change the angle a little bit, possibly shift some north, we appreciate everything you're offering as far as the data, and we can tell that you want to be good neighbors on the project, there's no question. But once they're in place, they're in place. We own them. I don't mean that physically own them, but they're going to be there for the next 25, 30 years. So, for us to make sure we dot all the i's and cross the t's, to make sure that the abutters are satisfied with a project like this, you know, I think that's an important step for us. So, with that being said, yes, sir?
I just want to see what will be exactly required of us then, so should we, we're happy to meet with Ron, talk to you about what relocation could look like potentially, as well as a more in-depth study on glare. Are those the two, those would be the two outstanding?
I think if you could satisfy Mr. Brooks' concerns regarding the possibility of the relocation of some of the panels, or the possibility of shifting, as he talked about, I know that you said some of the direction is more important. Possibility of, if, if he's satisfied with screening on the project, I'm really open to anything, provided the abutters are satisfied. You know, that's the concern that I have.
Okay.
So, really, I think to me, it's all open, but also it'd be interesting, I think, just from a perspective for learning experience for the board, if we could talk about some of those other items that Mr. Marin brought up, in terms of, not necessarily glare, but, you know, position different time of the year, what's it going to be like January 15th, when there's no leaves on the trees and the sun is at its lowest point? You know, what it's going to be like in July, when the trees are full and the sun is at its highest point?
Sure.
You know, so, things like that, I think those are important, like, learning potentials for us.
Okay. Yeah, we can do those things.
Okay.
For screening and for shifting, it, we may find that it would not be feasible to push the modules north, and it very well might be, but are we precedent on, do we have to move them north, I guess is my...
Again, I want to...
We can run the analysis, certainly.
My concern is satisfactorily, satisfying the abutters. I don't, I want to leave everything open. There's nothing requiring you to shift anything north, there's nothing requiring you to move even a small percentage of the panels. I think that in order to satisfy the abutters' concerns, I'd just like to see the opportunity for dialogue.
Absolutely.
Come up with a reasonable conclusion that makes everyone happy, and then go from there. And I also recognize that you're trying to minimize the cost of the project as well. You know, we don't want you to have to clear out 10 acres of land, you know, at a substantial expense, and also it has environmental impact. As you know, we talked about deers and critters, and, you know, that's some of the things that I have a concern with, is maintaining as much green space in town as we can.
Definitely.
So, I, I really do see both sides of the project here, and I think that there's an opportunity to come to a reasonable conclusion for all parties concerned.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I guess I would just have one, I guess for me, the fact that there would be minimal clearing is a plus to this project. I think I'm in the minority in that, but I think that, although I obviously do respect the abutter, because it seems like it's a butter, not abutters, that have a problem, it's a big piece of land. To sell it to a developer, you might be looking at the hearing that we just had, and that would definitely not be better than this. So, be careful what you wish for.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a final comment to the applicant's thoughtful request. So, just to underscore, we're, we're offering for your, for your discussion, for, for your thoughts. So, this is your application to make? And so, as you walk from it, I mean, I think what we're suggesting is, if you, you choose to explore, because it's really in, in your court, if you choose to explore other options with the abutter, and come back and re-propose in a different approach, or provide us with additional information, it'll arm, as the chairman said, it'll arm us with more education so that we can make the most deliberative and, and, you know, judicious decision that we can, for your benefit and the benefit of the neighbors. And so, it's, it's really in your court to have those conversations, and you decide, there's no requiring you to move in one direction or another. So, we're not requesting that you do so. What we're requesting, I think, is, is to think about what we've said, think about what the abutters have said, take that in, and to decide for yourselves if you'd like to reposition your proposal, your application, or if you'd like to go forward exactly the way you've, you've proposed already. And so, that, that's really your decision to make.
Yes, I'm glad Mr. Marin pointed that out. Again, I'm certainly not trying to delay a project, I'm just trying to, again, satisfy all parties concerned, but if you so choose to have a vote this evening, we can certainly do that as well. And I want you to be aware of those, all of your options that are on the table.
So, they know that you're empowered with this decision.
Absolutely. Can I chat with these guys?
Go ahead.
What do you...
Yeah, so, hi, Sarah, again. And just to arm you guys as well with a little bit more information, so that you can also make an informed decision as well, we've brought this as well to the Conservation Commission, and showed them these exact plans, walked them through our stormwater runoff, walked them through our environmental, like, our, our standard environmental assessment exactly for the deer, for those other animals that are in the surrounding woods, and also talked a lot about deforestation. And that's a key role for us here, you know, we're renewable energy developers, we're trying to save the world, not deforest it. So, for us, the reason that this...
Doing with it, that's a very, very big project. We went by it, took a look at it, and it would really enhance everything. I have no other.
It's a pretty nifty old house.
Sure is.
Mr. Marion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any additional questions. I viewed the property, and I would only suggest that it's an ambitious project, and I wish the applicant well.
Yes.
It's a large undertaking, but as someone that has a great appreciation for property, the betterment of a property is near and dear to me. So, I really appreciate what they're trying to do.
Okay. Ms. Blaze?
No, I drive by the property just about every day, so it's much improved already. Thank you.
Ms. Roach?
My husband and I have looked at that house a thousand times. It's a great house. I think that'd be a great improvement, be able to look at the lake. I'm good.
Okay. So, I agree that I am really happy that you're taking on this project. I just have to discuss with the board quickly, you know, this is a variance. We have to discuss hardship issues. I'd like to have your input on how we can provide that.
Hardship, I would say, is, you can satisfy a topology question by the mere fact that that house has been there since 1700. And that alone would satisfy it. There were no zoning laws when the house was built.
Probably predated the road by a few hours.
Probably did. Probably did. So that, as far as the topology, I think you could satisfy it that way. As far as the effect, any adverse effect on the town, I think it would have a beneficial effect.
I agree.
With the town. As far as any monetary gain, you're going to spend a lot on the house.
Well, I would say the financial hardship of rehabilitating a house of this nature, this would offset that cost.
Absolutely. So that I think that we don't have any problem meeting the requirements for a variance.
Okay. Well, so I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with all points raised, based on recognizing the serious nature and the longevity of the variance, but I think you have a well case here for that. So, no additional comments there. I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Second? All in favor? Double motion on the project?
I would make a motion to approve.
And grant the variance.
And grant the variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We look forward to seeing the progress.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our last applicant of the evening. Lester Street Solar LLC requesting a special permit under section 3.2.4.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for commercial solar facility on properties located at 476 and 500 Lester Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 14, parcel 3, map 15, parcel 1, and map 8, parcel 1, 2, and 10 is the applicant present.
Oh, we're on my phone.
Good evening, gentlemen. If you'd like to approach the lecturer, are there a motion open to the hearing?
Motion open to the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have, let me see, this is what we're talking about now.
That's this.
Okay, so I understand some proposed changes to the permit. Is that correct?
Big time.
Yes.
There are some proposed changes to the project, Mr. Chairman.
Project, yes.
Correct. Right. So, just for the record, my name is Adam Costa. I'm with the firm of Mead, Teller, and Costa. I represent the applicant, Lester Street Solar. We've been before. Your board were also presently before the planning board and the conservation commission as well. We had a meeting with the conservation commission last evening for our order of conditions for the site. I think that meeting went relatively well, was continued for further proceedings at a later date. We also have obtained an A&R endorsement from the planning board, and we currently have a site plan review that's underway before the planning board as well. Obviously, we need a special permit from your board, which we'll need to acquire before we proceed any further with the other boards. So, with me tonight is a representative of the applicant, as well as the project engineer. I'm quickly going to yield the floor to them so that they can describe the changes to the project, and then we'll certainly answer any questions, comments, concerns that the board might have.
Mr. Chairman, as a setting up, I would just thank the gentlemen for their patience this evening.
Yes, absolutely.
As we run over, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Nick Facendola for the record, from Level Design Group, project engineer. We prepared the site plans for the application, and I will give you a brief description of the existing parcel and the proposed development. So, as you can see here, we have the existing parcel located at 476 Lester Street with approximately 270 feet of frontage along Lester Street in this area. And we also have two intermittent streams which run through the site, one located here, one located there. The green highlighted areas are the wetlands of the site, which abut the intermittent stream. The site has an existing access driveway which runs from Lester Street through the site and goes up the hill to a former residence, which I believe burnt down, is no longer habitable. There's an existing former foundation and other pertinences for the existing, former existing dwelling. There's an 80-foot-long bridge located in this area right here. This bridge provides access to the upland portion of the site over this wetland. That bridge right now, it's a solid bridge, but it does need some modifications to the decking to provide access for H20-loaded vehicles, so there'll be some work required to the bridge. As you can see from the topographic map, varying slopes throughout the site, very steep site, grade running from the north to the south, primarily for the entire site, and draining towards the two intermittent streams located in those areas. So, the applicant, one more thing, we were in front of the planning board last week for an A&R plan, which created eight separate parcels from this one large parcel. The new property lines are highlighted here in blue, so you have one parcel here, a second parcel here, a third parcel in this area, fourth parcel here, and a fifth parcel there. And there's three additional, what we're calling strip lots. The first is located here, it's 10 feet wide, which divides this lot from that lot. There's another 10-foot-wide parcel which runs through the center here and branches out that way, which divides these parcels from each other. And then there's a third strip lot which divides these two parcels. That plan was endorsed by the planning board last Thursday and has been recorded at the registry of deeds. So, the applicant, well, the multiple applicants for this development, they're looking to propose ground-mounted solar electrical generation facilities. Each site will generate over 1 megawatt, approximately 1 megawatt of power on the five proposed sites. Access is proposed from Lester Street, and we would use the existing driveway to traverse the site all the way up along here to provide access to all the separate solar facilities. Some minor site grading in this area for regrading purposes and to install stormwater facilities. Other than that, it's just going to be tree clearing and ground cover for these systems is going to be the existing vegetation, and they're going to do a lot of chipping of smaller trees and spread that over the ground and let it re-vegetate naturally. Now, the types of racking systems they're going to use are racking that can accommodate slopes in excess of, excuse me, up to 25%. So, it's racking systems that will accommodate these steep slopes, and they're approximately four to five feet high, which allows for vegetation to grow underneath. It'll be maintained as necessary with a brush cutter to provide sufficient access to the panels for their duration, which is approximately a 25-year life cycle. Each separate facility will be fenced, and they will all also contain some ground-mounted equipment located in this area here for this system, this area here, 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 and there. So, the ground-mounted equipment will be transformers, and the main portion of the ground-mounted equipment would be a battery pack for each of the systems. This battery pack is used to essentially equalize the power output from the solar panels to the grid, so it's not just a large influx of energy. When it's really sunny, it kind of provides a nice steady stream of energy to the system. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We have applications in front of planning board for site plan approval. We have not been heard yet by them. We're on for next week, and we have an application in front of the conservation commission. We had our first hearing last night. We have not been issued file numbers, so that hearing was continued, and we have a site walk scheduled with them on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. to review the wetlands. I can turn it over to...
Well, can I just ask, before we go further, what was the purpose of separating, you had one large plot, and now you have five smaller with the blue lines, and they look blue through these glasses, I apologize.
Yeah, correct. They're blue, yes.
And what was the purpose of breaking those up?
I'll let our counsel address that.
This is something that we're seeing with greater frequency for these projects, especially now that the SREC 2 program is over, or will soon be over, and the new SMART program you might be familiar with, I know you had an applicant before you tonight, is in effect. And it's also, it's primarily a consequence of the marketability of these individual projects and the SREC credits that are assigned, or the individual projects are assigned credits that are at a greater value for smaller projects than for larger projects. So, by creating five separate projects, essentially each with a total capacity of approximately a megawatt, plus or minus, it increases the marketability of each individual project. It increases the value of each project, which fits better into the business plan for many solar developers. I've seen it with a number of other developers I'm working with. My firm represents 15 communities as town council. I've seen it in three or four communities that I represent. Not something I was seeing three or four years ago, but it's more prevalent under the new program. The reason for the, the only thing that's a bit more complicated maybe about this plan than some I've seen, although again, I'm familiar with the rationale behind it, is that you've got these sort of sliver lots, they're not buildable lots, they're not going to be built upon, but that separate the individual buildable parcels from one another. The purpose of those is just to prevent the continuity between the individual projects, so they're not contiguous to one another. There's some concern that moving forward where the regulations are constantly in flux and their programs are changing from time to time, that there will be modifications in the future that would prevent projects from being contiguous. I'm not aware of any that presently exist. The present SMART regulations that have been adopted as CMRs don't prevent contiguous projects. They do include, and I saw your town planner, I think it was, who passed us when we were out in the hallway waiting when you had other matters before you, and he handed to me, and I'm familiar with it, and I appreciate his point, he handed to me 225 CMR 20, which are the SMART regulations. And he pointed to a provision here that he thought was concerning that dealt with segmentation. I'm aware of the provision. We're not attempting to avail ourselves or to circumvent the segmentation provisions for a couple of reasons. One is that the segmentation deals with subdivision, and we're not proposing to subdivide the lot. We're actually, we have already been before the planning board, and we've obtained A&R approval, and A&R by definition is not a subdivision. But more importantly, the segmentation provisions are meant very specifically per the explicit language of the regulations, to avoid projects that, multiple projects, each of which would not exceed 5 megawatts. So, rather than create a single project at 15 megawatts, which would not qualify under the SMART program, you create three projects, each of them is 5 megawatts DC, and you do so by dividing your property into three lots. That's prohibited under the regulations. That's not what we're doing here, because even if these properties were combined as a single project, we'd still be under 5 megawatts. There's no benefit to us in trying to divide them up to evade a size threshold, because even combined, we're at 4.99 megawatts DC, we're under the 5-megawatt limit. But I appreciate the point your town planner was making. It would certainly be contrary to the regulations if we had a much larger project, say a 10-megawatt project, and we were attempting to subdivide the property in such a way to create two projects out of one.
Okay. So, I'm just allowing the board to familiarize themselves with this. So, if you just read here, basically where I have that...
Arrow.
The arrow down, that will give you the idea of what we're talking about. So, the issue here is that Matt gave us a copy of this here, is that the Cota Mass Regulation, 225 CMR Department of Energy and Resources, prevent, at least as far as their interpretation, from breaking up these lots for the purpose of maximizing their investment. So, if you could read through that briefly, and we can discuss from there what you think the interpretation might be.
It prevents breaking up?
It does.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so if I can just confirm, total project size, what, and I apologize, you might have already addressed this, but so where does this come in with all the lots considered?
And my client just corrected me, I've been saying DC, I mean AC, and there is a difference, for those of us who understand the difference. The individual projects are approximately 1-megawatt AC. Combined, the entire project with all five lots on which there will be located solar panels is 4.99 megawatts AC. So, just to clarify, because I think I need to make a slight correction to what the chairman said, it's not that this provision that you're being pointed to, Section 20.05, subsection 5, general eligibility criteria for solar tariff generation units, sub-paragraph A, general eligibility requirements, which speaks to the segmentation issue, it's not that it prevents projects from being segmented to maximize profit, that's, it actually doesn't reference profitability at all. It prevents segmenting projects to attempt to get more than 5 megawatts via multiple projects, because under the SMART program, you are maxed out at 5 megawatts. So, you can't say, "Well, I have the ability here to construct 15 megawatts worth of project, so how about I just subdivide the property into three separate lots, put five, five, and five, and now I've got three projects, none of which surpass the 5-megawatt threshold under the regulations." My point here is that, yes, we're subdividing, well, we're not subdividing, we're dividing the property, but we're not dividing it to evade any sort of a size threshold, because even combined, we don't exceed the 5-megawatt threshold. It's only for consistency with our business plan to maximize the marketability, because, you know, these entities, they try to market the individual projects to different operators from time to time. So, it maximizes the marketability of the individual projects, not to mention that because, again, there are SREC credits that are assigned at a greater rate to smaller projects, it increases the profitability overall of the project, which helps offset some of the costs of developing a site like this. You heard earlier about the, some of the topography changes on the site. Obviously, the site is treed. You've got a wetlands crossing that is already in existence, so we're not disturbing new wetlands, but we need to improve that crossing. All of that adds cost to the project, and some of that can be offset by utilizing the greater SREC credits for smaller projects.
Yeah, so are you just going to clear cut this whole hill? Is that it? Is that what I'm seeing, they're going to just clear cut the...
They're going to have to.
Trees right out of it.
The areas where the, and I can let the engineer speak to it, but the areas where the panels are proposed certainly will be cut. There will be a buffer maintained. Do you want to speak to that?
Correct. So, I showed on this plan, I don't know if you can see it from back there, the pink line here is where the limit of disturbance is. So, anything in pink will be cut. So, you have disturbance areas located for this first system up here. This area will all be cut. This remainder will be left vegetated in its natural state. This area will be cut, with this remaining area here, here, all through back here will remain in its natural state, along with this area, this will be cut through here, but the whole side of this area will remain wooded. So, total site disturbance for, I have it here, for Lot 1, Lot 1's 12.3 acres, we're just, we're going to clear 7.8 acres. Lot 2's 25.9 acres, and we're going to clear 8.4 acres, so about a third of the lot. Lot 3's, which is right here, is 34.22 acres, and we're going to clear 7.7 acres. Lot 4 is 27.5 acres, and we're going to clear 6.85 acres. And Lot 5 is 23.4 acres, and we're going to clear 6.5 acres. So, about a third of the site is being cleared.
Thank you. Mr. Chico?
Yes. You've used two terms that I just want to get some clarification. One, that you wanted, the reason for this was to make the project more marketable. And then you also said, "Another operator." Is this project going forth or proposed? Are you going to be selling this project? Will you be the operators of everything that'll be up there? Or are you looking for marketability because in individual areas, you're looking to sell or lease to another operator?
Sure. So, I could probably answer your question, but not as eloquently as Pedro can, since he handles the business management component of the business, and I'm just a lawyer. So, Pedro, do you want to address how you operate these facilities?
Good evening. My name is Pedro Rodriguez. I am the project manager for this project. And to answering your question, Silver Solar Holdings owns the property and will retain the property. In some projects, we obtain finance by bringing a partner into the project.
You obtain what?
Finance to build the construction.
Okay.
And that is the whole thing. We're not planning on selling the system, or we're doing it because we're going to sell it. We are the owners of the system at this moment, and will continue to do so.
So, the rules and regulations that the town of Auburn may have in place to take care of...
They will, yeah.
...a project like this?
Yeah.
I'm not dealing with the person right now that might be running the project.
Oh, no. We will take care of responsibility until the project is done and built. And the ONM, the operating and maintenance of the project will be followed according to what we described and was approved to the town. Nothing else will be changed or anything else if we ever, if the project ever changed ownership.
Mr. Chairman, do we have in place a process by which somebody that they would say and lease a part of the project to, would have to present any credentials to the town, being that that's the first direct contact we're going to have?
Well, we don't have anything in place right now regarding, say, a third-party investor or anything like that, but we could certainly make a part of a special...
By my permit. In other words, just saying something happened, or there was something going on that the town didn't care for, or was against one of the town regulations, by the time it got back to you to be taken care of, it may have gone on too long. That's what I'm interested in, because, you know, it'd be multiple parties down the road, and I don't say that this one is. I just want to protect the town, something like that.
He's got something he wants to tell you.
Yeah. So, what we have done in the past, when we obtain a special permit, the town usually attaches a condition to the special permit, saying that we have to pay a surety bond before pulling the building permit, meaning that we pay X amount of money that has been estimated by a town consultant, that in case, in the middle of construction or after the project is built, something is wrong, the town has the money in escrow to fix this type.
And I appreciate the fact that you'd have to have a security bond. That's kind of like after the fact, if we have to go against something like that, it's after the fact. I'm looking to prevent something like that by saying, "Okay, you're going to bring in somebody that needs, that wants to run a portion of the project. We, as a town, don't know anything about this gentleman. We are going to take a person," I shouldn't say gentleman, excuse me, "we're taking your word for it." Now, obviously, you want him to be an upstanding, him, he, or she, to be an upstanding person, but we have no way of vetting this person.
So, we appreciate that, and I've dealt with that, both representing other applicants before other boards and representing boards like yours concerned about the same thing. And so, I've seen it addressed a number of different ways, and I think that we would be amenable to any approaches that you might propose. One way for sure is to include a condition in the decision, that if there were to be an outright transfer of the permit, that it would require advance notice to and approval by the board. So, if there were to be a new entity entirely that is operating the facility, this facility were to be sold, you'd need to be notified, you'd need to approve of that new entity prior to the transfer. That, of course, doesn't address the other issue, which is what if there are certain components that are being operated in conjunction with the applicant that is now before you? I use the term marketability, that might not have been the best term. I heard Pedro say "financeability," which is really what it's about. It's about financing partners, maybe for each of these individual five projects within the same project. But certainly, we could include a provision that indicates that we provide you with the identity of any entity that would have any kind of a management or operational role with respect to these facilities, contact information for that sort of a company. It's not all that different. I understand that solar facilities are relatively new in the scheme of technologies these days, but it's not that different than permitting a mixed commercial use facility where you've got a half a dozen different tenants, and you're granting the special permit to the landowner, who's going to develop the structure and subdivide it, and then engage a company that'll find five or six or seven different tenants for that facility. Each tenant is subject to the special permit that applies, but what's your enforcement mechanism? Well, you've got an enforcement mechanism against the landowner, the recipient of the permit, and technically, you can go against each of the individual operators, because that special permit is a covenant that runs with the land by virtue of it being recorded in the chain of title. But it's still nice to know the names of those tenants, contact information for those tenants, so that when the restaurant is, you know, having an issue, you don't have to contact the landlord first, you can go directly to the operator and say, "Address this as quickly as possible." So, we understand the need for that, and we're certainly happy to, you know, if the board were to see fit to approve the project, to allow for any sort of a condition that would require us to provide you with the information you need and work cooperatively with you to ensure that issues get addressed quickly.
Okay. One other thing, because there was a, the bond was mentioned. Is there, because we have already spoken in this vein this evening, on a different one, will you be providing a surety bond? Should you go out of business, or should the whole project have to be redone with an inflation cause?
Sure. So, I was just confirming with Pedro, so typically what's done, and we, in most cases, we await a request from the town, and it sounds like I might be getting that request now, we could submit the information that you'd like. We would provide two bonds in connection with a project of this sort, a surety bond that would ensure the operation of the project, particularly the completion of construction, if for whatever reason the project were to be partially completed, the stormwater management system wasn't finished, there were to be stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties, you get complaints from neighbors, you've got the funds, if we don't address the problem, to go in and address it yourselves. The second bond is a decommissioning bond, which, of course, is of no consequence in the short term, but is of consequence in the long term. If, following the full lifespan of a project of this sort, 20, 25 years, the project doesn't get decommissioned, you have the ability to go in to remove the panels, to bring the land back to what's nearly as practical, to its original condition, ceded, stabilized, et cetera, and you've got the money to do that. So, we can provide estimates for both of those things. We usually wait until the town requests it. You can certainly have your consultant, your officials or staff, review that number, and we can have a discussion about what the appropriate number should be to adequately protect the town.
Thank you.
Mr. Marion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I need to, I just, if you can help me with some clarity on, so we've got five lots that this project is spanning. And I appreciate very much, and I want to divest back into the 5-megawatt piece, because we spent so much time on it earlier, clarifying on where this angles. I mean, you're at 499, and so you're right there. And I'm not suggesting that that's done fortuitously to come up to the edge, but you're not clearing an entire lot, you're clearing a fraction of each individual lot. So, my question primarily is, are the, is the orientation of these panels within each individual lot based on the best possible configuration to maximize your generation of electrical energy? I mean, why is it configured in a little bit in this one, and a little bit in this one, and a little bit in this one? Why are you spanning, rolling this up to five lots versus condensing it? And I guess, and I'll just be completely transparent, what's driving my question is, you're not using, you know, the boundaries of each and every lot. So, is there, is there a projection that you see if regulations are modified, I won't speculate further, are you leaving portions of each individual lots vacant on purpose? And for what reason?
Well, we'll start with the orientation of the panels, based on the...
Based on the site topography, the maximum sun is received on the southerly face of the landscape, so you see the north arrow here. So going through the site, the slope from here to here on this portion, the grade just continues and travels from the south to the north, so you're receiving maximum sun for Lot 1 here. And then we're following the existing grades for Lot 2, you can see how the contours have been traversing the site in this fashion. So to achieve maximum sun exposure, we position the panels here, the crest of the hill, the site is roughly in this area, kind of follows the driveway as you come up along here. So we're following the existing topography of the site, keeping in mind that the racking system can only support up to a 25% grade with their adjustable legs, but we also took that into consideration, so there's no panels situated here, because the grade was too steep. So we kind of oriented the site in this fashion, and then left a little place for stormwater management down here. So essentially, same thing down here, southerly facing, working with the grade of the site, and maximizing the southerly face of the hill with the crest of the hill essentially running through here. So the crest kind of runs up through here and down through here, this area slopes towards this way, it doesn't provide good sunlight, so there's really no benefit in installing panels in this area of the site. And over here, it's not southerly facing, but it's easterly, which is the second-best face to obtain maximum sunlight, that's why these panels are facing in that direction.
And I appreciate you articulating that in each individual site, and I'll just ask, as we're on the record, are there any projected additional uses for the areas that you're not putting panels in?
I'll turn that over to the property owners rep. No.
So you have no addition, you have no intention of expansion beyond what's being proposed here at any point in time in the future?
No.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. I don't have any additional questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from any of butters as we move through, but notwithstanding other board members to speak.
Ms. Blaze?
So you now own this property, correct? When did you purchase the property?
We purchased the property a few months ago, I think it's about two or three months ago, we purchased the property.
With this intention only?
With this intention only, yes.
Were they five separate properties that you purchased, or was it?
There was one single parcel recorded in the registry of deeds, and there were five separate parcels in the access system.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Ms. Roach?
Okay, I have a list. So I guess my first question is, start to finish, what are we talking about for our timeline?
Okay, so we're developing this project with the plan that it will go into the smart program. The rules of the smart program are being written, and we expect that the smart program is going to be active by July 2018. So if that happens, and we have all the approvals in hand, we can apply for qualification. The qualification usually takes about a month or so. After that, once we get the qualification, then we'll apply for a building permit. And then after the building permit is granted, we will go and start the civil work. Seeing the property that we're going to go and clear and develop, roughly 30 acres, this civil work will probably take about three to four months. After that's done, we almost simultaneously do the installation. So for example, we start on the front, by the time we're in the third parcel and the second parcel, if this lot is ready for installation, we start installing the racking. So it kind of goes all together, first goes the racking, and then the panels in the back.
And so how long is it going to take to clear the lots and put all the panels up? When are you going to be done, when are you going to be out of this neighborhood? That's my question.
Oh, so the estimated construction time for this project is probably seven months.
Total?
Total. Weather permitting.
Okay, close, okay. And there is going to be just one access point in through that front one lot?
Yes.
That's how you're going to access even the top, the bottom, all the lots get access from that one point?
Yes.
Back to the marketability thing for just a minute, so I think if I'm understanding this correctly, it's five separate lots, which means you can market this to five separate entities in order to come into some kind of a lease or contract with five separate companies in order to find one that that specific lot or setup is best for, correct?
Well, see, I made the mistake of using the term marketability, and I think I probably used it, should have used the term financeability, because my client knows more than I do about the operational aspects of the project. My understanding, and Pedro, correct me if I'm wrong, is it's less an issue of marketing individual sales or operations of these facilities, it's more of the five different lots, buildable lots, it's more an issue of the financeability of the individual projects, and the fact that there may be multiple financing partners that these deals are negotiated with through the smart program, is that accurate?
And the energy that is produced from the lots, is, some of it goes to the power company, some of it goes to the people who come and finance the deal, some of it goes to you, where's that money going?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Yep. So let's say the project is all done, five separate lots, where is the energy? Is it being sold back to National Grid, is it being sold to the state through a smart program, is it being sold to individual companies? Who's seeing the benefit from the energy that's produced by the lots?
We don't know that yet at this point in time. So as, well, in this smart program, it's all going to be a fee-in tariff, meaning that the neighboring credits and the SRECs are going to be combined with a base rate, and then you're going to have adders and fines, pretty much. So it's all going to be, I don't want to say they're bought, but yeah, like, the credits produced from this project are going to be bought by either a housing authority, a town, or a private company. We don't know that yet, we're early in this stage. For example, we are, we have other projects that are built, or in the process of being built, that we're selling neighboring credits to the town of Auburn. So the credits that we sell to doesn't have to be in the same town, they have to be in the same lots on.
Okay, but because it's five different lots, it can be, each lot can be separately financed by someone, different finance partners, credits could be bought by someone different, that's essentially the intention of splitting it up into five lots?
Well, there's two things, right? So the financial partners will come for the construction of the arrays, they will share the ownership of the arrays, Civil Solar will remain the owner of every single lot and the entire property.
Yep.
That does...
I get that.
That's correct. So what you're asking is, in the hypothetical scenario, that we can sell or share the ownership of the five different systems to five different financial companies, is that your question?
Not the ownership, but Lot 1, you can have a separate person who helps back you for the financing, and Person A who buys the credits. Lot 2 has a separate person who backs it financially, and a separate person who buys the credits. Lot 3, separate financer, separate credits. So each lot operates as its own entity with different backing for financial companies and different person getting the credit. So for you, that's the marketability, so to speak, of splitting up the lots, correct?
Well, not really, because we are dividing the project into five different systems, but we see the project as one whole, like, we're not going to go and build one project at the same time, there's just no financial feasible, we have to come in and finish the whole project as whole, and bring one financial panel, we'll take care of one project. And usually, it's not one project, it's just a large portfolio. So, I mean, technically, yes, that can happen, but it's not something that is going to happen, or we intend to do.
Not the intention, okay. And then I guess, I have stormwater management on my list as well, has that been reviewed by any other board? Did I miss that?
We have submitted for site plan review, we have not had our first meeting yet, so it's my understanding that at the first meeting, the site plan, excuse me, the planning board for the site plan review process will authorize, I believe it's Graves Engineering, to perform a full review on the five separate applications. But the stormwater system was, the analysis was done for the entire property, because you can't just look at one little piece of this, it's one large watershed. So we have done full calculations in accordance with mass DEP requirements, and those have been submitted, but they have not been reviewed as of yet.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay. The President, I'd like to speak. Sir, if you could just approach the lecture, introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
My name's Tom Shannon, and I, but the property, I have 30 acres right below them. Like they said, the hill slopes down to my property, so I feel all their water is going to come down to my property the way they have it designed. My property runs along here, and down here, down along here, and cuts off the back. From not being an engineer or anything, knowing nothing about how the water flows and everything, they have a detention pond right on the lot line. I'm not sure if there's any setbacks or anything in the town as far as solar goes, like how close you can be on the lot lines, but this one appears right on the lot line with a riprap going onto my property. Then this other one is over here, and riprap going this way. So I feel that any water coming off the hill is heading my way. Like the previous guy said, when you clear cut, there's going to be more runoff. I feel there's going to be more runoff when they clear cut, because they're clear cutting that whole portion, which abuts my property right up against the lot line. And then same over here, like I said, there's a stream that runs here, I don't understand why don't they bring the rip, why don't they bring the water to the stream that's already there, as opposed to running onto my property? And then also, as far as trees go, I don't know who's responsible for trees and deciding, like, there's some big trees right along the lot line here, like, whether they can trim them or cut them, and then how far back they're going to cut. And I have trees along the lot line too, I don't know how that affects you guys also. And then another question that I sort of got answered last night was, the electrical connection between all the panels, I've been on other solar lots, well, solar farms, and they're all underground, and all your connectors are going to be above ground?
Yes.
So you just, like the conduit that connects all the... Because most of the ones I've seen, they've gone underground. Curious if you guys are doing that?
So we haven't done the building plans for this project, so I don't know exactly which conduits are going to be run underground or above ground, but based on the construction that we have done in the past, yes, some, like, some of the conduits will be run right above the ground, but some of them will also go underground, but that's something not for me to decide, that's something that the electrical engineer will produce during the construction plans, and will be submitted to the building inspector.
On that, you talk about cutting the trees, all the trees down, then just blowing the mulch and everything on top of that, but if you have to bury conduit lines, you're digging up the whole area, so it's not going to be stable at all, I don't think, and the whole thing is pretty steep. And then just the entrance to the driveway is very steep also, like the past owner had the entrance tied, because it always washed away, so I'm not sure, their plan is to have a gravel driveway going up, I'm not sure if that's going to hold or not. And then plantings and actually the sightline on this, the street goes here, then it cuts back here, there's not much of a sightline right where the driveway currently is. And then their plans on, there's going to be fencing around, I'm not sure if there's going to be any plantings or anything along the fence to prevent my site onto their site. That's it for now, thank you.
Do you want to try to address some of those concerns, sir?
All right, well, I guess I'll try and take it from the top. As far as the stormwater goes, as we previously stated, we prepared a stormwater management plan, full compliance with current stormwater regulations, you know, that will be proven out by the review by the town's consultant. You know, for the most part, you know, stormwater along this property line, you know, you're at the base of a hill, there's a lot of water coming off this line, this area right now, that water's going to continue to come down that face, that's why we installed this detention basin where it is proposed currently, to mitigate any water before it got onto Mr. Shannon's property, because we looked at this, and we said, you know, if there's going to be any future development in this area, it'd be possibly A and R lots down Lester Street on Mr. Shannon's property. So, you know, this stormwater management system would, you know, mitigate any of those concerns of increased stormwater. You know, the analysis proves out that it's going to be less runoff during the larger storm events, based on the calculations provided, but like I said, that'll all be proven out through the review process. As far as the above-ground, underground conduits, you know, that's going to be a combination of both types of systems, you know, you're going to have smaller wires connecting the panels coming up through here, there will be a main above-ground conduit system where we're going to have a new set of utility poles, which runs the length of the existing driveway to transfer power back to this area right here, where the connection's going to be made to the grid, so that, you know, the larger power lines, they're all going to be carried by new utility poles above ground. So any interconnecting conduit for the panels would be small and minor at that point, with the large trunk lines being overhead. As far as the driveway, it is steep, it's currently paved, and we're going to make slight improvements to that, you know, it's broken pavement, so we're going to do what we need to do to make that usable. We're not going to, you know, increase the footprint of it, but it's going to have to be reworked, repaved to allow for, you know, safety and construction vehicles to access the site safely. Plantings along the property line, and there's nothing proposed along this line, it's very densely wooded, and down through here opens up into a large wetland, and the back through here, so the intermediate stream comes in, so this wetland kind of opens up in through here, you know, it's not typically a good practice to add plantings to a constructed slope for a stormwater system, for a stormwater basin, so that's why nothing's proposed as of yet. We could sneak some arborvitae's or, you know, plantings of that nature on the slope, but that's a requirement. The riprap spillways, it's typical practice, I'm sure the board has seen this many times, it's an overflow spillway for the detention system, and these all have one outlet, and it's a piped outlet, which allows the flow to empty from the basin at a controlled rate, and the riprap is essentially an overflow spillway. If, you know, you get that 500-year storm, tons of water coming through, you know, the basin would overflow, because, you know, all basins are designed for the 100-year storm. So anything above that, you need to have the overflow outlet to protect the system. I think that covers just about everything.
The only thing I'd like to add is that I had a conversation with my client earlier tonight about mitigation, so when these projects are proposed in a more... So when these projects are proposed in more urban environments, or even in some suburban environments where they may be in residential districts, and you have a number of very closed residential abutters, screening is a big issue. It's a big topic and a substantial part of the mitigation package. This site benefits from the fact that there aren't a lot of residential abutters, as I understand it. My understanding, even with respect to Mr. Shannon's property, is that although it could be developable in the future, there's, there's no residence in very close proximity to the boundary. With that said, to the extent that there are specific concerns, and I don't see a room full of abutters with significant concerns, but if individual abutters have concerns about their perspective of the project, I heard a comment about plantings along a fence to, to screen the project or buffer the project from the neighbors. You just heard we're amenable to things like planting along the slope. We'd have to work it in conjunction with the stormwater management system to be sure that it didn't interfere. But if the board had some request that in certain locations there be some additional screening added, we're making an effort by preserving the substantial portion of each of these individual lots to provide for a tree buffer, a wooden buffer around the solar panels, in a manner that doesn't interfere with the actual sunlight coming to the panels. But if there's additional screening necessary in certain locations, we're certainly amenable to having that discussion with the board and to accepting appropriate conditions that would require us at some reasonable cost to install arborvitae screens or whatnot to mitigate those effects.
So that goes on for the planning board, right? And this hasn't gone to conservation, correct?
Well, it's opened at conservation, but it didn't close. We don't have a DEP file number yet, so it can't close. So it's been continued. It opened last night, right?
Do I have a rebuttal to let you speak, or did you just go up, introduce yourself, and give us your name and address, please?
My name's Anthony Brooks. I live at 34 Berlin Street in town, but I own a small piece of property right across from the driveway. Most of my property is in Leicester, but I also own a little small piece in Auburn. And my, one of my questions was to the vehicle in which the energy leaves the property. Is it only on telephone poles, or will there be road construction where the road is dug up over there? It will be telephone poles. Thank you. Also, you had mentioned, maybe this is a question for the engineer, this area here was going to be dealt with or graded somehow, and that's where one of the, I don't know if you'd call it a substation, but an, you know, electronic panel. And I'm wondering if that will be, how far off the road it will be, if it'll be shrouded as to for site, and if it produces any noise, a constant, anything like that. That's, okay.
No, any of the electrical equipment that will be installed on the property do not produce any noise. And if does, it's just very, very minimal, just like a small battery that you might have in your house, or something like that, almost nothing.
Yeah. So in this front area, there will be some site grading to accommodate the steep slopes to get us to that 25% grade, where we can install the racking. That's why we're showing this grading here. So, you know, anywhere we're doing grading, we will be removing top soil and, you know, doing some earthwork in there. So that will be loomed and seeded as part of the, the construction process. And then there's no screening planted, excuse me, proposed right in this area, but it's something we could, like, like the attorney said, we could definitely look into at the request of the board. And, you know, especially up against Lester Street, we can install some fencing for screening or additional plantings.
Thank you. The only other, I guess, concern I would have, and this maybe is more for the town of Leicester, but it also, that road isn't greatly traveled by construction vehicles. It's more of a cut-through, where it's automobile and small truck traffic. So those trucks over a seven-month period of construction, although, you know, maybe it won't be dump trucks full of fill coming in and out, may, may impact the road there some. And I know in front of my building, though the way the grade is with the road, it gets very soft in the wintertime, and when the road is starring, and it may become, cause a nuisance there in that area. It's just, I'm not trying to be a pain, but it's just something I thought of as you guys were talking, so, thank you.
And if I could address that, you're certainly not being a pain at all, sir. That's a fair request, and one that I've heard often. Most boards, and you probably have some experience with it yourselves, include some sort of a condition requiring a pre-construction meeting of sorts with town staff, your building commissioner, and sometimes others, public safety officials, to determine everything from construction routes to construction schedule, to make the town aware of what's going to occur, when it's going to occur, how the vehicles are going to come to and from the site, to ensure that those are not issues based upon time of year, time of day, things of that sort. So we're certainly amenable to an appropriate condition of that, of that type.
Yep. Just to address the, the construction vehicles, you know, we're, the site was designed in a fashion where, you know, we're minimizing cuts, fills, earth removal, earth transport. You know, the biggest concern, I guess, would be log removal trucks. So, you know, any, any trees, you know, 10 inches in diameter over, they would be taken off-site with the remainder of the trees chipped and spread throughout the site. So the larger trees would come out on log trucks. You know, we haven't taken an inventory of the number of trees, but that's something that the logging company would do. And, you know, that would most likely be your largest impact as far as, you know, weighted vehicles on the roadway. So I just want to make the board clear of that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
I think Mr. Brooks raises an excellent question, and I was going to ask Caleb. So during the construction phase of a project, when construction vehicles, those types of things are traversing a public way, what, I mean, I would assume that the expectations are that, that any remedial work that would need to be done on the roadway that was caused by the construction during the time would have to be repaired, replaced, maintained during construction, and put back to its original, or better, I would assume.
Yeah, that's, to the chair, that's something that could be accomplished with the condition by the planning board on their decision. Just while I have the mic, I want to talk a little bit about, I have an issue with the zoning on this project. When the applicant completed their A and R plan, they created one buildable lot and seven non-buildable lots. So the lots that they're proposing this development, which would require building permits, are on non-buildable lots, and they're labeled that way. So when they presented their, when they submitted their zoning interpretation, I was under the impression this was one parcel, which would require special permit and site plan approval. I don't see how the board could issue special permits on non-buildable lots without variances. And I certainly couldn't issue building permits on non-buildable lots. So from what I see, there's only one buildable lot present, and that would be Lot Label Number One.
Caleb, may I ask, is that because of the, when they broke it up?
When they created the A and R, there's only one lot that has road frontage. The rest of them actually are labeled non-buildable lots.
Right.
Because that's a requirement of the A and R plan. If it's not a buildable lot, it must be labeled that way.
So to that point, Mr. Chairman, so we, and Caleb, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And so, so based on that approach, it would be a variance request and not a special permit?
I would say after they submitted their A and R and had it approved, they would need variances and special permits and site plan approval for each individual lot they wanted to construct on.
Because they're, because they're labeled non-buildable lots, other than that first lot?
And they were, they were separated, whether they're owned by one person or not. They were, at the applicant's admission, they were separated and owned by separate entities.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, because I didn't, I didn't align that when that was being discussed earlier, based on the division of these five individual parcels. I would, I would submit that, I would agree. That makes perfect sense. They put themselves in a position which would require variance and special permit affixed to those non-buildable lot designations.
So, I mean, it seems to me that we have some administrative requirements that need to be cleared up before we can move forward on this anyway. Between the, I think the interpretation of the 225 CMR Department of Energy Resources that was discussed earlier, the issue with the A and R and the non-buildable lots, rather we're talking about interpreting between special permits and variances. So I, personally, I don't think this is something that the board can act on this evening. I think there's too many administrative responsibilities that need to be cleared up first. And we have to have the paperwork in line before we can move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I...
We don't have the paperwork in line right now to move forward with this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would agree with you. I think as it's, as it's been proposed, and it's been proposed as five separate, so if the applicant were to, to choose to move forward, and Caleb, you can jump, cycle back in here, if the applicant would choose to move forward, then it's possible on Lot One that an action could take place, but certainly not on the follow-up lots. They would have to be amended, the application would have to be amended for the...
I would agree that Lot One is a buildable lot, and the board could act on that.
Okay. And, and so what I would suggest to the chairman, because of the way it's been submitted as five separate applications, is that based on that criteria, and that's only the one administrative item, there's another you would mention. But, but there's potential action, I would submit, for that first lot, but I would absolutely agree, I would recommend that we not take action until those administrative issues are navigated for lots two through five.
So I think we have some interpretation issues here regarding the way your permits were initially submitted versus how they were modified, the building commissioner's interpretation of whether we have a special permit issue or a variance issue, and then also with our discussion on the Code of Mass Regs. So I think best probably step forward here would be to continue the hearing. Let's get some of these administrative issues ironed out, and then we can move forward and determine what the best course of action for you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I concur with that entirely. I do want to raise a couple of things for the record, and also get maybe some guidance or permission from the board. So respectfully, with respect to the regulations, I've attempted to address them tonight. I'm certainly happy to further address them with your building commissioner, with your town council. The regulations are not before the board. The regulations deal with the qualification of the SMART program. They don't deal with any sort of zoning issues. They're not before this board. They're not before your planning board. They will be an issue for my client if my client doesn't comply, because he won't get financing or approval from the Commonwealth for the project to proceed. I'm aware of the issue with respect to the frontage, or the lack of frontage on four of these five building lots, or lots upon which solar panels are proposed. I have a somewhat different interpretation than your building commissioner, and I learned earlier today, we were put on notice of this about two weeks ago. Pedro asked what the status was. He was told that an opinion had been requested from town council. We followed up a few times over the past couple of weeks. We found that at about 4:00 today, that town council had chimed in and had expressed similar concern. I don't know what information town council had. I'm not sure what those concerns were, but it only became known to us at about 4:00 today.
Sure.
I'd like an opportunity to have further conversation, not only with your building commissioner, but also with your town council, to work through these issues. I appreciate, and as you know, my client has legal representation. I've been practicing zoning law for 12 years. I represent municipalities, I represent other developers of solar projects. This is not something that is a surprise to us. We knew what we were doing when we submitted an A and R plan. We were aware that four of these five lots don't have frontage. It's my opinion that that's not necessary under Chapter 48, Section 3, because solar energy systems are benefit, share the benefit of certain zoning exemptions. I believe I have case law, specifically a case from the land court just a few years ago, that supports that position. I don't want to argue the law to this board. I don't think it'd be appropriate, but I would like to have that conversation with your council to try to work through some of these issues, so that maybe we can have a resolution achieved prior to your next meeting. But I would only want to do that with the board's permission.
Yes, and absolutely, I think I can respectfully agree that the board would be very open to that type of conversation. I certainly would not want you to argue the law before this board, since that is not our mandate. But I think there are certain questions here that require expertise and clarification that can come back to us to make an appropriate decision.
If we were to submit applications for variances, because I'm not conceding the point, I don't believe we need them, and I don't believe they can be required for solar energy systems, but if we were to submit those applications for these four other lots, the four that don't have frontage, any sense how the board might handle those? I mean, I've got concern subjecting these four other lots to the traditional variant standard. You know that standard as well as I do. I overheard you discussing it in a prior application tonight. I'm concerned about the hardship qualification. I believe I can make a case for it in these circumstances, but any, any feedback from the board in that regard? Is there a recommendation from the board that we submit in advance of the next meeting, so that we're not going ad nauseam at this project, applications for variance, so you at least have that option before you when we next meet?
Well, you know, that's something I don't think I can look forward to down the road and give you, I think, an interpretation of how the board would feel. But I mean, certainly, I'm familiar with this land, as we all are, and it certainly has unique topographical features. You know, I personally, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm open to the idea of variances, but I think that would be more appropriate for you to discuss with the building commissioner and town council, and determine what the best move for you to be, would be to step forward.
Okay.
So I think, again, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't think variances are off the table, but I think that would be best served between now and the next meeting, and determine the best course of action.
Sure. I want to be very clear for the board that, and I think it is obvious following our presentation tonight, that we're segmenting this project as we are for marketability or financeability issues, to keep it in line with the business plan for the project. It's not to try to take advantage of some loophole, or sneak something through or pass the board. As we explained before, we've got a 4.99 megawatt project that could be permitted as a single project if it were not for us trying to satisfy these other desires of ours, and we have the adequate frontage for a single project by simply eliminating the interior lot line. So we're trying to do something for our own benefit from a business perspective, and at the same time fit it into your zoning. So, again, have that conversation with your council, with your building commissioner, and hopefully come to some resolution before your next meeting.
And I will say, again, from my own perspective, the way that the, the layout of how the proposal of the solar panels kind of sort of weave through the properties, for me, I find that a little bit more palatable than I would seeing the entire thing clear cut, and, you know, I think it seems to fit into the landscape a little bit better. And again, just, just from my point of view. So I do understand what you're trying to achieve. I just think we have to work through these administrative issues.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to add something about the, you know, why we're doing 4.999 megawatts. And it's not because we want to keep it really close to the SMART program. I mean, the SMART program is being written right now. The only reason why we keep all the projects no more than 5 megawatt AC or 4.9999 is because you, if you go anything above 5 megawatt AC, you have to integrate directly to your transmission lines. And the interconnection application is a completely different game, way more complicated. And they just have a different department in national agreement. We don't deal with that.
I do understand, and I appreciate you clearing that up, too. I can see where the infrastructure would have to be upgraded significantly with anything beyond that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one additional comment through the chair, if I can.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
We've talked about this, I think, a little bit, but for the stormwater management, I would want to see some peer review. I just want to be clear about that, so when you come next time, we're not telling you. I would want that to be reviewed before I'd be willing to, to give it a go.
Okay, so my understanding, and this is the challenge, and again, I defer, I know every community handles these projects differently when multiple permits and approvals are required. We've been informed that the planning board will require that review as part of its traditional site plan approval. We are willing to submit to that. We're going to be required to place funds and DAS for to pay for your peer review consultant to do that review. We're prepared to do that. We've indicated that to the planning board. We'll be before the planning board next week and begin that process. I don't know when we'd next be before you, and what will be achieved between, but obviously we're bound by your zoning bylaw and the fact that we need a permit from this board before we proceed with, with the other approval. So we're, it's sort of a chicken and an egg thing for us, but we're, we're required to undertake that review, and we're going to.
Through the chair, if I may. I agree with council. It would be, I don't think it would be right to ask them to put out the money for the peer review before the use was approved by this board.
Right.
When that could be done with the planning board.
Okay. I think, I think the intention is to make sure that it's on the record that it's a requirement. Okay, so, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Excuse me, through the chair, through the chair. We'd need a motion to continue, we need a request to continue from the applicant.
So I need a request to continue from the applicant, I apologize.
Yes, I would request a continuance. When is your next, your next meeting?
December 21st, I believe, yes.
So we would seek a continuance to that date, and we're happy to sign the form that's about to be presented.
Okay, so I do have a motion to accept the applicant's request for continuance to December 21st.
Motion to accept as stated.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so for the record, this hearing will remain open. So if anybody wants to make any public comment, you can do so at the... make any public comment, you can do so at the building commissioner's office, town clerk etc., but it will remain open until the 21st hearing.
Thank you, gentlemen, and to the abutters, Mr. and Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you for your patience for being here. Sometimes we come in and it's going to be 15 minutes long, or that's three and a half hours.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Briefly, some administrative responsibilities, we have the minutes from 9:21, 10:19, and 11:02, the motion approved the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our next meeting is December 21st, 2017, at 17:00 p.m., do I have a motion to adjourn?
Through the chair, we just have a couple of signatures for the 40B project.
Oh, we do have them, okay.
Thank you for your patience.
We are not adjourned yet, we have a couple of signatures to do. You did?
It's too late.
I totally agree. And watch some news, it'll annoy me. And have a glass of milk.
Okay. I thought it would have been time to take your latest this past week, I wouldn't believe. She was gonna...
Work something better off having extras. Yes, those are mine, too, thank you. Okay.
I've got it.
Signatures for JB and Mary D.
I only signed two, that's right?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, our signatures have been collected, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.